If so, please state them for the record and if during the course of the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the Chair. It'll then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter. Mr. Ford?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recuse myself from EICS for number one, North Carolina Virtual Public Schools Annual Report.
So noted. Any other items? Very good. At this time, I'll turn to my colleague, Mr. Wendell Hall, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chairman, please stand. Join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. We now come to our special recognitions, a time on our agenda when we recognize significant awards, resolutions, and those who make a difference in the lives of our public school students each day. Today, we have the honor of recognizing North Carolina schools who've received the National Blue Ribbon School Honor. This program is in its 37th year and more than 9,000 schools were recognized by the U.S. Department of Education several months ago. I'll turn the program over to Ms. Kristy Lynch-Ebert to provide a brief overview of the award and honorees. Welcome.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. It's such a thrill to be here to recognize these fabulous schools this morning. The National Blue Ribbon Schools Program recognizes public and private elementary, middle, and high schools based on their overall academic excellence or their progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. Every year, the U.S. Department of Education seeks out and celebrates great American schools, schools demonstrating that all students can achieve at high levels. The National Blue Ribbon School Award affirms the hard work of students, educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging content. The National Blue Ribbon School flag gracing an entry or flying overhead is a widely recognized symbol of exemplary teaching and learning. At this time, I would like to recognize the two North Carolina National Blue Ribbon Schools for 2018. I will name each school and ask its representatives to stand. Following the verbal recognition of each school, representatives for that school should come forward to have their pictures taken with the State Board of Education. So our first school that we're going to recognize this morning is Josephine Dobbs Clement Early College High School from Durham Public Schools. We have to accept the award today, Dr. Gloria Woods Weeks, the principal, as well as Dr. Pascal Mubenga, the superintendent. Let's acknowledge this honor for them and they will come forward and have their picture taken. [applause] have them come forward.
We're tall, we've been tall to stay.
Board members and advisors, if you want to stay near the front, I'll announce the second school and they can come forward and have their picture taken. So congratulations again to Josephine Dobbs Clement Early College High School. Our second school that we are honoring today is Union Elementary School of Brunswick County Schools. And we have to accept this honor today, Ms. Vicki Smith, the principal, Sam Jennings, assistant principal, Becky Hewitt, third grade teacher, and Antonia Johnson, elementary director for Brunswick County Schools. Let's honor them now. [applause]
Congratulations. Congratulations.
One side is the data, two on the other. Yep.
Which, which way?
Yep, definitely.
Make sure I got everybody.
The tall girl. The tallest girl in the bunch.
I could get you to stand right there. Perfect.
No export reply.
And one, two, three, and one more. One, two, and three.
Congratulations again, Union Elementary.
You're the best, but you're good at that.
Yes, sir.
That's always the best part of a Thursday meeting. Always. Yes. So we'll now proceed to our committee reports and I remind committee chairs and the audience that all voting on consent and any item requiring action will be done at the end of the agenda via roll call. I'll recognize Ms. White, Chair of the School Turnaround Committee for that report. Ms. White?
Thanks so much, Chair Davis. Good morning, everyone. It has been my privilege to work alongside J.B. Buckston and an amazing team of professional educators to work on the issues facing our state with low-performing schools and school turnaround. As you can imagine, it's been a multifaceted discussion and we've got a model for you this morning for discussion. It's our North Carolina Reform Model and we've got some recommendations for you. So with no further ado, I will turn the podium over to our friends. Good morning, Julie.
Good morning, Chairman Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, and state board members. It is nice to be with you again. My name is Julie Garber and I work in district and regional support and I'm here to share, I lead the reform model program and I'm here to share with you our renewal recommendations for you, for your review. So just to make a connection directly to your, to your strategic plan, the, the reform model, so we see here your strategic plan and goal number two, to improve school and district performance by 2025. And then you see parts of the component, of the reform model within your component number one, which is right now our restart model program. So, to make that direct connection for you, I was here in October to share with you some recommendations and now I'm here to provide a follow-up report for you. Since then, we have established a restart council, which is a cross, collaboration, cross-agency council, and I want to let you know that I'm very grateful for their work with us. They bring lots of expertise that touch, touches the restart program and so very thankful for their input and advisement. So as we mentioned the last time, we, we have gotten together and we have defined some recommended criteria for you about meeting expectations for academic gains. And then we have some outcomes for you that we are recommending if the schools, for these restart schools who meet or do not meet these expectations. So, to go ahead and define academic gain, and I want to make a connection to the statute and the policy here, both the statute and the policy require that schools give an annual report that documents academic gains. So it's important for us and for all stakeholders involved that we have a common language and understanding of what we mean by academic gain. So the council has devised this definition for you. Academic progress, academic gain is academic progress of a school demonstrated through, and I'd like to add the word established, performance assessments here, so these are established through accountability and DPI, and the systems that impact student achievement from a utilized flexibility. So restart schools obviously have the opportunity to use their flexibilities and this is a component of their progress. So we wanted to make sure we added that in the definition. Another piece that will be important for us as we move along in these recommendations is to have a common language and understanding of what we mean by flexibility. Of course, with a restart model, we know that a restart is operating with the same exemptions as, and statute, exemptions from statutes and rules as a charter. When we say flexibility, we mean the ability to operate with an exemption from a specific statute or rule. Some of those examples include budget rules, employment requirements, calendar statutes and requirements. So these schools have the opportunity to have the flexibility to be exempt from those kind of statutes. There's many more, these are just simply examples for our conversation. And then when we say flexibility outcome, we mean the metric used to identify progress in the implementation or the evaluation of the flexibility. So we are asking these schools to say, you've been given this flexibility, but it would be wise to track the flexibility and say, how do you know if it's working? So they are asked to, to document and the flexibility, flexibility outcome then is that metric that they've determined. So with all that being said, we want to give you the recommendations, the components of these recommendations that we have for you. So these five components then, we are recommending are comprised of what we call academic gain. So first of all, the restart schools have had to, their requirement for entering the program, the reform model program, is that they are recurring low performing. So our goal then, of course, would be that they are no longer recurring low performing and so that's the first list. And I'm happy to tell you, we have schools on that list. From the 58 cohort, there are now schools that are no longer low performing, recurring low performing, I should say. Then, of course, we have growth and this comes from the idea that growth drives proficiency and then it's also aligned with your own goal, strategic goal. Then we move into the achievement score, which is that combination, the combined test results of the proficiency scores. Then subgroup growth status, and again, this is aligned with your own strategic goal. And then finally, finally, the flexibility outcomes. And you heard me talk about this previously, so this is the opportunity for the school to say, we've chosen and selected this flexibility, we've measured it over the course of three years and we can tell you that it's working. The hope of this is that, and as, as we've had the opportunity to listen to, for example, the NCT study, we know that there are huge barriers to these schools even before they reach the achievement. So if they can use these flexibilities to address these, these barriers, then they are, they are, have the opportunity to move towards pushing growth and achievement. So these are the recommended components for you. So to go a little deeper then, we have renewal options. And this is the idea then, that logic statement that I referred to in October, that if this, then that, that logic statement, if they are meeting the academic gains, then what? So we have some outcomes for you, our options. So this means options, the opportunity to renew the restart status based on the academic gain of the school. So there are, these are our recommended options for renewal. We are suggesting a three-year renewal in which we call it restart-renew. So it would be, so a little bit of a new name in the back end for financial and business purposes behind the scenes within the agency, keeping restart but adding a renew and really giving these schools the opportunity to be exemplars in some upcoming professional learning and networking. Then the one-year renewal option, then a consultative support. So this is, I should let myself follow my own slides. I'll just go over them and then I'll go deeper, I apologize. Consultative support, intensive support, and then non-renewal. So now I'll go a little bit deeper for you and explain, of course, with academic gain then, the schools would have these two options. The three-year renewal would be restart-renew, as I mentioned. The school would begin a whole nother three-year evaluation cycle. So they have another three years. They're finding success. Let them continue on, but it's important that they share their flexibilities, what they're doing specifically with their program, so that would be their only part of the annual report that they give. Then, one-year renewal would be that they are demonstrating growth, but they're not out of, growth, achievement score, but they're not out of recurring low performing yet and so give them another year. They've had three years, give them another year. But, but from those five components that we outlined, they are showing progress. Okay? So I'm, I'm happy to tell you that from our calculations with these recommendations, we have 11 schools that would be in this category. Yep, that would be fabulous. And we'd like to use these 11 schools as exemplars and have them share their story with other restart schools. Then we have about 36 in this category of one-year, of a one-year renewal defined. So 36 in that category. So then the other statement of the, the other part of the logic statement, if they're not showing academic gain, and actually, I'd like to even clarify even more, these, according to the calculations in these recommendations, these would be schools that are showing that they're going backwards. So they're going backwards. And the consultative is the idea that at year two, now they have three years because we know three years is a, is a research-based time that they're demonstrating progress, but at two, at two years, if they're showing that they're going backwards, we're going to come in, is our recommendation with consultative, and offer to work with them. And then intensive support would be after three years, they are going backwards and we need to have the opportunity, opportunity to engage with them. So some of the details are in the workflow and the, the description that are both in your packet. So we've really worked hard to go and dig into the details and make sure that we felt comfortable that we could come to you and say, this works, we can identify. And so we have, so as an example of that, we have nine schools right now in this category that we would say, and this is year two, so of, and I'm counting the 58 in our first cohort. So right now, at this moment, year two, we have nine schools that we would, we would work with and offer this kind of support. So both of these, consultative support and intensive, we have some ideas of where we'd like to go and I can say again, the, the council has been wonderful to give their input and their ideas of what we could do to support these schools, but of course, after, after we have approval from you, we would, we move forward and flesh it out a little bit more. So the, the last piece in the renewal option is to, to address those schools that may be out of compliance. Now from my, my knowledge, I, we don't necessarily know that we have schools that are out of compliance, but to make sure that we are addressing policy and making sure we're addressing all lines of this, of this continuum, I guess, to acknowledge non-renewal. So if there were schools that were completely out of compliance, and I'm not talking about performance, if they were out of compliance with statute, if they were out of compliance with what the model says, for example, if, if we, if somebody, someone discovered that there was a school who had more than 50% unlicensed teachers, that's not a part of our model. So being, being willing to say, and have it in policy to address this, these areas potentially. Right now, there's nothing that I know of, so at any rate. So our recommendations from the restart council would be to submit the following for rules review, because of course, with policy, that would have to go through rules review. And we are recommending this definition of academic gain to you and then also the reform model renewal options that we've just gone through. So with that, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the people that have supported this process and we have an amazing reform model council, you can see their names up there and their different representations across the agency. And then I also want to take the time to acknowledge the Office of Charter Schools because when we began this process, we, someone in the agency made a connection and said, you might want to talk to them. And so I had the opportunity to sit down with them and they were very, very helpful in guiding us. So with that, I will pause and just say thank you and ask if you have any questions.
Ms. Garber, this is, it's tremendous work and I want to thank you and the council for, the best way I can describe it is listening to this and talking about this over the past year and a half has made it easily digestible for Mr. Buckston and myself. But for those of you who are not seeing it and discussing it on a day-to-day basis, it is like drinking water from a fire hose. There's so much information to be consumed. And so what we've done as we, as we've communicated and need to communicate with our districts, our LEAs, and then our individual schools, this puts what we're doing with reform into a very systematic, progressive measure of if this, then that. And I can't thank you enough for articulating that so well in today's presentation. With that, are there questions about what this means for reform from any of my colleagues? Ms. Cannon?
This is not so much a question, it's just a comment based on something that we heard last month from Mr. Cannon at North Edjicum. And that was the, his concern that when you are in the restart model, you have these flexibilities and you are able to not be low performing anymore, but then as soon as you get to that hurdle, you lose the flexibilities that let you get there in the first place. So as we go through this, and I think you've addressed that somewhat by this, the renewal, the renews category, but I think we all need to be mindful that perhaps we're putting schools at risk as soon as they get to that point where they're, they've been so successful in turning things around, but then all of a sudden, we're changing the rules and yanking the rug out from under them again. So I'd love to see us find some way to, if those, if those schools have used those flexibilities successfully to preserve them somehow, and I know that's not within our purview, but it makes sense to me.
With this, they would continue with the flexibilities and from, from listening to you the last time I was here and that idea of sometimes restart has a stigma, well, if we can add the word renew to it at the end and acknowledge, you've renewed yourself. You've taken this opportunity, you've hit the reset button, and you've made changes and you're progressing. So it, and really use those schools as an opportunity to encourage the others, share best practices. I can say also that I took the opportunity to, to speak with Donnell and he was a wonderful, had wonderful input, so I really appreciated. And his feedback, part of his feedback to me was just an appreciation of it being defined. He said, sometimes without a definition, there's some trepidation. And so he shared that.
Great.
Vice Chair Duncan?
This is just a timing question. If you get to the three-year renew, potentially, or the one-year renew, how, how quickly is that going to be decided? That is, I complete my three years, when do I find out whether or not I'm going to be renewed for three more or one more or not renewed at all?
Great question. So at the end of their three years, they have to submit an annual report that by statute and policy is December 1st. So as soon, and that's the following year, so as soon as, as that information is compiled and because the five components are first based on performance, in working with accountability, it was shared with me that, that we could give them the, the list of schools and, and they could actually very quickly respond to us in terms of which schools have met that academic gain. So I'm anticipating mid-year. So for example, this, their annual reports are just now coming in and I'm hoping to by, by January. So if these recommendations were in policy now, we would be able to communicate to them by January.
So would, does that mean there'd be a six-month gap where they would not be in restart status, even if they've been very successful?
I, I would say they keep their restart status, yes. They would, they would retain it in that.
Even though they hadn't been renewed yet?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I hear, thank you for catching that, I hear what you're saying.
Watch that out.
Yes.
Further questions? Mr. Buckston?
Just two, two comments. I want to add on the thanks for the work of the team and I think this is great progress on this. For board members, I just remind you that as we go into the new approach to the ISD, the restart is no longer a kind of safe harbor from that. If you're on the list, you're on the list. This might be the model you choose to get yourself off the list. So for those schools that had things they wanted to do and needed these flexibilities to do, it just provides clear runway for what the steps are like. If we did have any schools or districts that just wanted to safe harbor and to get themselves off the ISD, it's maybe even more important because it provides a clear runway for the kinds of things they need to do and the timeline to keep those flexibilities and show growth. And so the districts are really supporting the restart schools, not just saying, okay, we've gotten them out of trouble. And I don't want to suggest that anyone's done that, but if in fact, that wasn't anyone's calculation, this provides, I think, a lot more clarity and structure about how they move forward. So I, I would commend, along with my chair, this approach to the board.
And by even raising up those exemplars, we have the opportunity to share best practice across, across all of them and really encourage them.
Yes, Mr. Bristow Smith?
So just want to say, having been in North Carolina schools for 23 years, I'm so appreciative of the disruptive innovation that is taking place with the restart model. When I think of restart, I immediately think of innovation, I also think of equity. And I'm deeply appreciative also that a model for sustaining that innovation is what you brought today. So just like huge thank you to the state board, to the, the agency, to everyone for just embracing that. Just needs to be said that this is not doing school the way we've always done school. This is different and it's huge. I did want to ask for those restart schools that are trending backwards instead of forwards, I'm curious to what extent, when we do root cause analysis of that regression, if, how much of that is connected with the availability of high-quality teachers and high-quality staff? That is a particular area that we know is, is a high leverage point for schools and I'm just wondering to what extent restart schools with their entrenched non-academic issues in the community have difficulty recruiting and retaining high-quality staff? As a principle of a small school, I know that even losing one or two key staff members has the potential to throw my school growth status in jeopardy. So I wanted to ask if at some point, maybe we could have just a conversation even off the record about that. I'm really interested in that. And I also wanted to remind the board that Dr. Bowen at our fall planning and work session spoke specifically to the, the need for the ISD and for small, struggling schools to have mechanisms to recruit and retain teachers to their area when they don't have a local pay supplement that is competitive with a Durham or a Wake, which was in the news this week. So I just feel like that needs to be elevated up, that there, there might come a time in which there's a disruptive pay scale structure also that's very innovative for struggling schools to help retain high-quality staff in those schools. I think we have that in the principal pay structure now with that $30,000 bonus for principals going to low, persistently low-performing schools for three years. I think that's very disruptive and very innovative in terms of principal compensation and would love to see some similarly disruptive and innovative model for teacher compensation for restart schools that may be having difficulty finding high-quality teachers. Just wanted to.
Well, they certainly have the flexibility. And so the flexibility, the way the annual report is, this year with a new flexibility piece, it's a separate form, I'm really hoping to identify schools, specific schools, the flexibilities that they're using and the metrics that they're using. So I hope to have more specific information to you and we return with that information. And then I appreciate the idea of the root cause. And my hope is that with, as these recommendations potentially move forward, then the idea of consultative support and intensive support would be an opportunity to work more closely with.
principals going to low, persistently low-performing schools for three years. I think that's very disruptive and very innovative in terms of principal compensation and would love to see some similarly disruptive and innovative model for teacher compensation for restart schools that may be having difficulty finding high-quality teachers. Just wanted to.
Well, they certainly have the flexibility. And so, the flexibility, the way the annual report is, this year with a new flexibility piece, it's a separate form. I'm really hoping to identify schools, specific schools, the flexibilities that they're using and the metrics that they're using. So, I hope to have more specific information to you and we return with that information. And then I appreciate the idea of the root cause. And my hope is that with, as these recommendations potentially move forward, then the idea of consultative support and intensive support would be an opportunity to work more closely with the school and do root cause analysis. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Commends you again for the good work and for exercising your access to your own professional learning community and collaborating with our friends in the Office of Charter Schools. But we look forward to the recommendation for, for policy and rules that will be necessary.
So we'll bring policy back to you in January.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Very much. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Ms. White. I now recognize Mr. Buckston, Chair of the Student Learning and Achievement Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, board members, I'm going to flip the agenda here a little bit. I'm going to ask Ms. Batts and colleagues to come up in one second and we'll do new business. I'm just going to briefly summarize our work yesterday and then I'm going to be joining the rest of the meeting by phone. And so, I'll, I'll stop, I'll jump out and do that and let the presentation go forward. So just, you'll hang with me for one second. We're going to have on the agenda after new business, just a reminder, we've got three action items. SLA 1, our revisions of high school diploma endorsements. And just a reminder that based on legislative action, there's going to be revisions to the three legislated endorsements, not the State Board endorsements with qualifying scores on SAT, ACT, and we've got to make those again due to a legislative change. SLA 2, we had our report. We will vote to accept the report on broadening access and success participation in advanced courses. That's our report to the General Assembly. It was good of the College Board to join us for the meeting yesterday. We saw some unfortunate numbers in the decrease in AP, IB, course-taking. Lot of discussion about what that meant, a request by this board to come back when more data's been collected and have a little bit further discussion. I think we also have a lot of questions about how to think about some of the dual enrollment, AP, quality points. And so we'll have a deeper discussion sometime in the spring. And I think President Tipton Rogers and I talked a little bit about making sure we have some community college and post-secondary perspective on that as well. So we're thinking about where our kids are going, how they're best positioned, their future. So more to come on that, but again, we'll just vote on approving or not, depending what your reference is, that report. SLA 3 will be our third action item. That's the report to the General Assembly on the statewide administration of testing program, which also includes information about local testing administration. Dr. Howard provided a comprehensive overview of that report. We vote on that report and accepting that report. She also provided an overview or an update of where we are with the innovative testing program, the grant we have, the pilot, and the through-grade testing that, that the department is putting together. And I think information's being collected as we speak from educators around the state about their, their, their input into that program. So those are our three action items. We had two discussion items, our K-12 social standards, social studies standards revision. We'd approved moving into that revision. This was an update. We will, the department will come back to talk to us about moving into installation later in the spring or summer. As a part of that, we talked about the graduation requirements related to social studies, the educational personal finance course, founding principles. We've got two courses that now are required. The department is putting an options approach on the table for next year so that folks like Tabari and Matthew don't have to offer seven different courses, but might have some choices in there and then a four-course set of requirements moving forward. Lots of questions from the board about what is going to be out of American history, issues related to some of these different choices. We're going to come back and get some, some more information in January. But as a reminder to board members, it's the hope of the department that we essentially bless this to move out so that master schedules can begin to get created in places like Edgecombe and Craven and other places. That will come back for more discussion in January. Finally, we did a early literacy update where we talked about the definition of high-quality instruction that you have on Eboard, but we did not discuss yesterday because Dr. Galloway had to be away due to a conflict. She will come back and Dr. Stigall and Dr. Galloway and others will discuss that with us. That will be an important piece to how we're setting up the kind of training, the kind of educator prep programs that we're focused on to prepare and support our educators. We also talked about some availability in our current read-to-achieve budget. The department's going to come back in January and provide some options where we might push into low-performing schools, districts that need continued support for educators and students in relation to K-3 reading. So that was our update. Okay. All that said, and through, three consent items, three consent items, which I did not talk about yesterday. My apologies. We have the English Learners Headcount, which is an annual report, which is on our consent agenda, about a 10,000 increase in our English Learners Headcount in North Carolina. We have SLA 7, our State Advisory Council on Indian Education Membership nominees. We commend those nominees to you. We've got two. And Dr. Oxon, I also want to recognize you for just a quick commercial about it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Buckston. I will only take a minute to make the, my colleagues around the table aware and those listening in and the audience and online. A very important event is coming up. It is sponsored by the State Advisory Council on Indian Education. It is the, every two years, the council hosts a summit. This year, the summit is going to take place on January 28th. It's going to be held in Greensboro. What I will do is ask Dr. Townsend-Smith that she will do a thorough update and, within the Friday update, on the details, the specifics around the summit. But we are, the theme this year, or the focus of the, of the summit this year is on tribal consultation. And this is a new requirement out of the Office of Indian Education, the Department of Education in Washington. And so, this is going to bring together our superintendents, our superintendents where we have title, Indian education grants. But we also want to bring, in addition to those superintendents, we want to open it up to superintendents across the state. So we're really excited about the summit. We would love for you to be present and you will be getting more information about that in the Friday update. Thank you, Mr. Buckston.
Thank you, Dr. Oxon. Done. So that, again, that item, that consent item is our vote to approve Rhonda Watkins to the council. And then finally, SLA 8, which is Council for Exceptional Children nominees. We have Leanna George and Cynthia Daniels-Hall. We commend their appointments to you and that's on the consent. All that being said, we had, we have one new business item today. We have been looking at MTSS for a number of years and doing annual report. We're in year five, I believe, our implementation. And we are fortunate today, not only to have Ms. Batts and Ms. Laney, but I think we also have Dr. Lupton from the Guilford County Schools to give us a little bit of sense of how things are playing out on the ground. So Ms. Batts, thank you for being with us.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Chairman Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Johnson, members of the board and advisors. I'm Angel Gutwien-Batts, the interim director of Integrated Academic and Behavior Systems Division. And I am excited to be here representing my fabulous team that supports our state with, supports our districts, charters, state-operated programs, lab schools across the state. So we're just excited to be able to be here with you all. We're pleased to give you this update on our statewide implementation of MTSS, a multi-tiered system of support. I'll try to keep mind of my acronym today. A Framework for School Improvement. MTSS is the work of our Integrated Academic and Behavior Systems Division. So MTSS, excuse me, I need my clicker. Here we go. All right. So we wanted to make sure that we connect it with the State Board Strategic Plan and we connect with Goals 1, 2, and 3. So today, today we will make connections to Goal 1 through our work with school engagement and social-emotional practices. And Goal 2, through our focus on core and intervention practices for academics. And Goal 3, through ongoing educator professional development and learning that is provided across the state. So our agenda for today, we're going to give you a background of our work with MTSS, so what is MTSS. We're also going to give you our implementation update of the work that's been going on for the last couple of years. And we will hear of implementation in action from our MTSS Director from Guilford County Schools, Dr. Tina Lupton. A multi-tiered system of support is a framework for school improvement. MTSS encourages implementation of research-based practices, academics, behavior, and social-emotional support in schools. A hallmark of MTSS is utilizing data-driven problem-solving practices. Our division employs a systems approach to implementation. The North Carolina MTSS framework is built on six critical components of implementation. You can refer to handout 1, that is in Eboard, which includes our division mission and vision. At its core, MTS asks us as educators and leaders to be thoughtful about the practices we put in place for each and every student, pre-plan that additional support for some, and be prepared to intensify support for a few if and when it's needed. So here's our timeline of the work that we've done in the last couple of years. In our multi-tiered system of supports, we have, it has been in place in North Carolina since 2004, known then as Response to Intervention, or RTI, and Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, PBIS. These frameworks focus separately on supporting the needs of students struggling with academics, that was the RTI side, and all students with behavior, the PBIS side. As national models began to shift to an MTSS framework, one framework that supports academics, behavior, and social-emotional needs of all students, North Carolina streamlined its implementation efforts as well. In the fall of 2015, the Division of Integrated Academic and Behavior Systems began implementing a cohort model of MTSS professional learning and technical assistance, with the initial unit of implementation being our district MTSS teams. Four cohorts of traditional LEAs, charter schools, and state-operated programs have engaged in a three modules, in three modules of blended professional learning and technical assistance. A fifth cohort was targeted with charter schools that has ongoing enrollment and support from our MTSS consultants. In 2015, from 2015 to last year, our main focus was providing and supporting a standardized content to all involved district teams. As you can see from the timeline, the structured professional learning modules have concluded and our focus has shifted to targeted technical assistance to districts to create the sustainability needed for this work. This shift has required our division to rely on sources of implementation data to guide our support to districts and schools. We currently have 115 traditional charters, I'm sorry, traditional LEAs, 170 charters, three lab schools, nine operated programs, non-traditional programs that are involved currently in MTSS. As we noted in the timeline, the 2018-19 year marked the conclusion of the formal initial professional learning coursework for our district teams. As we move forward in implementation, we've organized our work to support around the tenets of data, systems, and practices. Our mission and vision, implementation data, stakeholder feedback, and national implementation guidance informs our work in these three areas. As you have heard and seen, we created a multi-year plan for state rollout based on implementation science. We did what we said we would do and it has been an amazing journey so far. Now that we've equipped these district leadership teams with the knowledge and resources, our focus has again shifted to supporting those teams to build that implementation knowledge and capacity at the school level. On handout 2, you will find some of the current strengths that we are building on as we, as well as our opportunities that we have for support. In the areas of systems, we continue to use that regional support structure to provide the professional learning and networking opportunities for those teams. We have increased our participation in charter schools and non-traditional programs throughout the state. In practices, we have significantly improved our support to districts around incorporating social-emotional learning as part of the core support to all students. And in the spring of 2018's Around Data, we released a new school-level assessment tool, the Facilitated Assessment of MTSS School Level, known as the FAMS. This integrated tool assists schools to assess their implementation of MTSS and allows districts to identify implementation needs across their LEA. As you may remember from previous updates, that have been, we have been utilizing the self-assessment of MTSS, which is the SAM, for school implementation data. Again, we listened to the field and revised that previous assessment and created an integrated tool that assesses the depth and breadth of academic, behavior, and social-emotional supports that work within their MTSS framework. So to share our statewide FAMS data with you, I'd like to introduce our division's lead data consultant, Susan Laney.
I get to do the numbers with you. So one of the metrics, as Angel mentioned, that we use to assess our saturation in schools and districts across the state is their participation in our self-assessment tool. Utilizing this tool is optional for schools and districts, so it gives us a very nice insight into how far we're reaching into school-level implementation. You can see on the slide that we've had quite a bit of growth over the last four years. In 2015 and 16, we had just started with our small cohort, first cohort of implementation. It's around 46, 45, 46 districts. So we had just some initial implementation data to share with you. I got to share those results with you, the board, and you encouraged me that 179 schools was not enough and to go get more. So we did that. So you can see in 2016-17 and 2017-18, we had increased participation as more districts joined our MTSS support. So as you can see, this past year, with the release of our new tool, the FAMS, we more than doubled the schools that completed the instrument from our previous year. And additionally, just an important point to note is, we can only report to you schools that use our scoring and tracking system that we offer to all schools. We have some districts who choose to keep their results in a different location and score them differently, so we don't have data available on those. So we're a little bit higher than that 1,600 schools. So we have several hypotheses we want to share with you for our increase in saturation across the state. The first is, as Angel mentioned before, just the rules of implementation science. So implementation science would suggest it takes about two to three years to gain traction and reach full implementation in any model. So after we finished our prescribed implementation plan with districts last year, we would expect that they would be working with schools. That implementation usually lags behind district knowledge about one to two years. So we're at the mark of the turning point where this is what we would expect saturation-wise based on that. The second hypothesis we have for our increased participation is the fact that we did revise and create an integrated school, tool for schools and districts. So I'm sure we might hear from this from our, our district, but our districts and schools are very happy to have one tool that replaces two to three previous tools that they were using that gave them very similar information. And our third hypothesis is that the information from this tool gives schools and districts really useful information. They, again, this is an optional tool. They don't have to engage in it. So we would like to think that they are really able to use the results from this tool to guide their implementation moves and practices. We don't share individual school or district results without their permission, so we have some pretty good trust and participation. And what this does is really allows schools and districts to truly utilize their results to propel their implementation forward. Additionally, one of the things that we think has increased that participation is we've collaborated a lot with school improvement, with Alessandro, to make sure that we're able to align the results of this tool to help with NC STAR planning. So we've got some crosswalks and guidance and have done a lot of work with schools and districts around that. So in your handouts on page four, I, I tried to put just the summary numbers up here, the pretty numbers. On page four, you have all the numbers. So I tried to think of all the ways you as board members would like to see these numbers throughout the school year. So you have them by school participation, district charters, lab schools, state-operated programs, and by region. And if you can't tell, I love doing the numbers. So if you want them any other way, I'd be happy to get them together for you. So that's, that's really just our participation. So that's, that's really just our participation. And again, what that signals for us is just our saturation in who's involved in our work. But it doesn't tell us where are our strengths and weaknesses, and where do we need to continue to focus our work. So on page five of your handout, you can see our state-level results by critical components. So this tool has 41 items, and they're, they're organized by our six critical components. And so you can see our state-level results there, and we did split this by level and then overall. And since we've introduced a new tool this year, we can't make direct comparisons to our previous years, but we have seen an increase in five of the six critical components. The three-tiered instruction component did lower a little bit this year, and we think that that is because we completely rewrote all of those items, adding in a big push for social-emotional learning. So that, we would anticipate that those items would be rated lower because they are new to our field, but really, they're rewritten to, to push our work forward. And then page six, if you want to see even more of the numbers. So this is where we take a look at our results at the item level, and our, our team looks at our highest and lowest-rated items across the state. And what that does is hopefully confirm the work that we have been doing. So our highest-rated items, so our highest implementation is around teaming supports, student engagement, and our core practices in academics and behavior. And that directly aligns with our first module of support. So those are the areas we would think that we would see movement in first. And our continued opportunities include our lower-rated items, so our core social-emotional practices, supplemental and intensive behavior, social-emotional practices, and intensive academic practices. And Angel shared a little bit about how we've included those areas in our district's support plan this year. But those results immediately feed forward the support that we provide for schools and districts. So you've heard plenty from us about state-level support and implementation, but that means very little if we don't see that move at the district and school level. So I'm excited to introduce to you today a colleague and friend with a freshly and very hard-earned doctorate, Dr. Tina Lupton, and she's the director of MTSS in Guilford County. And she's going to share some of their implementation efforts around utilizing the FAM S, connecting that to NC Star and how they're working through implementation.
Good morning. First of all, thank you all for allowing me this platform and time with you this morning, and thank you to Angel and Susan for also bringing me in on this trip this morning. So first off, I would like to say that the work that the IAB's team is doing has greatly impacted what we're able to do in Guilford County schools in moving our schools forward with implementation of MTSS as well as school improvement. So I have a sample for you from one of our elementary schools in Guilford County schools that have utilized their FAM S data to improve their school improvement process. So the FAM S has allowed us to review the systems and structures that we currently have in place in each of our schools. The data that has emerged from the FAM S allowed schools to identify the needs of the school that wasn't just a perception of a staff, but rather a quantifiable measure of what needs to take place next. We have seen that the problem-solving and discourse that has emerged from utilization of FAM S really moves schools forward. Every measure in the FAM S has a direct relationship with NC Star, which is the platform that we utilize for school improvement. We have had discussions about how the supporting indicators can help school leadership teams create those action steps in NC Star. The alignment of the FAM S to NC Star assists schools in making the action steps that support the systems, structures, and protocols that schools have in place. And the NC Star model has made school improvement an ongoing conversation that puts stakeholders around the table to make informed decisions that impact access that students have. In Guilford County, we are working to ensure that students have equitable access to instruction. Because equity doesn't just happen, equity is something that we create from the systems, structures, and processes and protocols that have been implemented in schools on a daily basis. When we decide the who, what, when, and where of access to instruction, we decide the spectrum of equability. And MTSS has allowed us to have the conversation of who has access and to ensure that students have equitable access across all subgroups. Through the lens of attendance, social-emotional, behavior, and academic needs, the FAM S and NC Stars are tools that have helped us engage in those conversations. And as you can see from the school sample that we have, they originally stated that in, from the FAM S, that they were 14% implemented in the three-tiered models of social-emotional, behavior, and academic needs. And again, as Susan said, when we added that social-emotional piece, it was something that brought us down a little bit, but brought critical conversations forward of what it means to have social-emotional health in our schools and how the social-emotional health impacts student learning. We have also seen that because of this data, it then shifted the school's development of A401, which is the implementation of a three-tiered model. So that school took that data and then put 20 action steps in place to help move them forward that directly related back to the FAM S. So far, the school is 65% complete on their current action steps under A401. Within MTSS and NC Star, they receive training, resources, professional learning communities, and data that has helped move them forward through an integrated process. Within Guilford County schools, the training that we have done has followed significantly on those six critical components. Within Guilford County, we started with understanding the why of MTSS and why this work is the right work to do. It was imperative for us to get the compelling why in order to kind of have that mind shift change that we needed to happen. MTSS, again, is centered around those six critical components. Throughout implementation of MTSS, we have discussed the need for using a problem-solving model, which is utilizing that database problem-solving, again, to make sure that we have equitable access. Also, through the problem-solving model, we have been able to identify root causes for the gaps that exist. We have also needed a comprehensive assessment system to assist teachers and school leadership teams in problem-solving. The communication protocols through collaboration and communication have impacted the effectiveness of teaming structures that exist within our schools. The need for master scheduling as well has created conversations around the diverse needs of students and ensuring that master schedules are based on the needs of the student, not the wants of a staff. We have also seen that we need to ensure that teachers and administration have job-embedded coaching and professional development that aligns to best practice that is research-based through the work that has been done by many colleagues. We also understand that MTSS is a whole-school approach. It cannot fall on one person or one team to do. The district initiative aligns with the, the work that we are doing with school improvement planning through NC Star, which has really helped move MTSS forward for Guilford County schools by seeing that MTSS is that school improvement model, not just a means for identifying students. Because MTSS is not fixing students, but rather fixing the systems and structures we have in place that have failed students before. So within MTSS, we finally get to the core supplemental and intensive supports around attendance, behavior, social-emotional, and academic needs. This is the last thing that we trained on because it was the last thing that was most important. Because we had to get the other systems and structures in place in order to truly know the needs of our students versus what needs to be done within the school. So the behavioral attendance and social-emotional needs that were met to include the supplemental and intensive supports for students of diverse needs. This work is ongoing and continuing in Guilford County schools. We are nowhere near the end, and we continue to seek the support of our IAB's team to continue to move this work forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions that you have for us?
Questions from our colleagues? Yes.
First, thank you so much for y'all's wonderful presentation. MTSS is something that directly impacts the teacher's quality of experience and whatnot in the school as well as the students. And I have a lot of experience with MTSS at both a school of poverty and then a higher-performing school. And I want to speak to both of those. I think there's no doubt that MTSS works and that MTSS targets specific needs students have on a very small, pinpointed place so that you can intervene and do a good job. However, y'all need to know that teachers are absolutely being strapped with a huge burden with MTSS, specifically teachers in schools of poverty, when the majority of those teachers are teaching students who are below grade level. The amount of interventions they are having to do at elementary school to identify special-needs students or students who are struggling is impacting our retention of teachers. My colleagues are absolutely burdened with this, and it is tough. I have been burdened with this. And I think this is directly impacting us retaining teachers, specifically in low-performing schools. What happens is you have students, you have 60% of your students who are not reading when they come to you. And now you're doing tier-two and tier-three interventions for 60% of students, which means the majority of your day is you are doing interventions and you're not doing tier-one teaching. And so we have a problem that our tier-one instruction, which is your base-level instruction, we don't have resources and materials that we need. We have classes of 36, 35, 36 kids in grades four through 12 because of that K3 class-size mandate. So we have these huge classes, and now we're having to do tier-two and tier-three interventions throughout the day with inconsistent pools to draw from for research-based practices. So we don't have consistent, okay, here's research-based practices for math interventions when a student can't do basic addition within 100. We don't have these resources. And so between the resources and the time being spent, this is really a big issue in elementary schools for teachers. And it's something that impacts our life daily, and I think we're doing a disservice to students because we don't have help. We need bodies in the school who can do MTSS with us, and that is a huge struggle.
Can I, can I just add to? That is one of the reasons why when we began our journey working with MTSS, we started at the district level, knowing that there are some schools that are in that same, looks exactly what you're talking about, that same demographic. And we talked about how Core in some places looks different than Core in others. So if I have a, a base where 60% of my students need that intervention, then my Core may look different than Core looks at Bats Elementary over here. Core may look different at Laney. They may look like tier-two, but that's Core. So I have more people actually doing that work, getting those students the things that they need. And I understand what you're, what you're saying, but...
From my, from how it's been implemented in the districts I've been in, tier-two and tier-three cannot be whole group like that. It is in small groups of four to six because that's the research-based practice. So I've been, you know, that's not allowed in a lot of situations because that's not an intervention. That's tier-one looking different. And so tier-two and tier-three interventions, research-based practices, are groups of four to six students. And so...
The small groups that you're talking about.
Right.
And sometimes you have, well, I guess in that case, you would look at it in a different lens. And I understand the capacity of the building trying to get all of those interventions done.
But, so, we can't use a lot of the data that we test students on. We have to do a pre-test and a post-test that's separate from a lot of our standardized testing. And so every week, we are testing tier-two and tier-three students separately. And so when we talk about testing, that's a whole nother level of testing we haven't addressed yet. And that's individual testing. Hey, Matt is struggling with short vowels. I give Matt a separate test twice a week during his interventions, in addition to state testing. I mean, this is a real issue that's impacting teacher quality.
I'll have Dr. Lupton to actually come up and talk to that.
So I actually had this experience in two different districts because I actually started my MTSS journey in Davidson County Schools, which in that county, we didn't have any Core programs. So it was much more difficult because when you don't have strong Core instruction, it's going to create more gaps. Now, in Guilford County, we do have strong Core instruction that is research-based that helps mitigate the gaps of students coming in. And we are currently in a situation where we're working backwards. Because we're trying to do MTSS with students that have already been failed for multiple years, it is much harder to close that gap. But for the kindergartners that are coming in today, there are significantly less gaps that they're coming in with to go up to first grade because of the strong Core instruction that they're getting from research-based programs that we've been able to put in place. Another thing that we do is we have many schools in Guilford County Schools that are upside down where the majority of the population is in need of intervention. So as Angel talked about, it is talking about looking at Core differently, where you scaffold the Core instruction to include prior grade-level skills so that all students are receiving in sense the background skills that they needed in a whole-group instruction, and then providing intervention for about 25% of the 60 that then probably actually have more significant learning needs. Because likely, the population, not all 60, need the intensive or supplemental support, but rather another way to access the curriculum that they missed the first year. So we're able to backtrack the skills of prior grade-level needs within Core instruction to fix some of that 60% gap that we do have.
I just want to say, the majority of this falls on the classroom teacher who has very large class sizes. And I agree, MTSS works, and I think it is a positive thing for our students who are struggling. But we need major support in schools, specifically schools of poverty, so that there's personnel who can do MTSS in addition to the classroom teacher. Because this connects to EC services, to our high percentages of EC students in schools of poverty, because that's how we identify EC students in North Carolina, is through this process. And so it's all cyclical, and then we look at, you know, the reform models before. It all comes together.
Ms. Morris, thank you for sharing your, your candid perspective. No doubt, your situation is not isolated, and it's repeated across our state. So we would welcome a follow-up report on ideas for how to address the very issues that she's bringing up. Dr. Oxendine?
Yes, this is, Mariah, this is a fascinating discussion that you're having at your end of the table. I'm listening to it intensely. And I, I suppose I, I would have to be in a school to see all of the pieces coming together to formulate a sensible question, but I'll go ahead and ask. It seems to me like the interventions that you're talking about should not be seen as MTSS interventions, but interventions in general that are applicable to instruction regardless. And you're nodding no, so I am confused. But I don't know, maybe I'm thinking about this too simplistically. But if you have a body of interventions that are supposedly right for reading deficiencies or mathematics or whatever, the content, seems like that would drive, that would be your, your strategies for, that you would use in general.
Yeah, no, that's not how it plays out, and I think that's part of the burden. Because what you're describing is more differentiation for, you know, lower-performing at level. But tier-two and tier-three have to be very specific, research-based, pre-test, post-test on Monday and Friday, an intervention from a research-based pool of interventions we pull from, and four to six students, not whole group. And that's driving how we identify EC students. And it, it's very specific so that I'm literally doing math games, you know, adding within 10 with Matt. But Tabari, his intervention is place-value chart. I mean, it's very, very specific, and it's not necessarily on standard for our standard course of study or essential standards. They don't, they don't necessarily go together.
Very good. Great feedback. Other comments or questions?
And I'd just like to say that the, the portion, if you look on the, on the slide where it says the teaming structures, when we first began this journey of MTSS statewide implementation, the number one, one of our number-one things was to not put the burden on the teacher. Like, we, and we said that throughout, throughout our training for the last however many years we've been doing this work because it's, everything has a team approach to specifically prevent that from happening. So I'd like to talk to you more about it to find out what the, if we can definitely have a conversation offline.
So there's districts that say only the classroom teacher can do these. And I have been told I can't use ESL teachers.
And that has not been our, that has not been our recommendation at all.
I think you got some candid feedback this morning.
Yeah, we did.
That we can put to good use.
Exactly, exactly. Exactly, exactly.
Yep, Ms. White?
Just like Matt wants permission before we... So, one of the things I'm hearing, Mariah, say, and I've certainly lived this out in a, as a principal of a tier one school in which the RTI triangle is inverted. And so core instruction's hitting like 30%. Tier two is hitting around 40 to 50%. Is that, you know, this is an optimal model. This model is, you know, we differentiate when we're doing core instruction. When we are using MTSS, we're providing individual kids with what they need. And it's an optimal model. We don't have optimal resources for that. And I think that that's a keen distinction to make is that the criticism isn't of the MTSS model. Clearly, it's critical. And, Mariah, you spoke to the fact that it works. What we're saying is, wow, what amazing implementation we have across the state as it has been scaled over the last five years. Have we scaled resources in a similar fashion so that schools are not just doing business differently with their existing resources, but they're driving their resources to where they are most needed? And that is for children who are behind standard with where they ought to be. So like fantastic model, you know? We want to make sure that we support that. And please don't think otherwise. I mean, your presentation is clearly compelling and it resonates with us. We all want to serve kids in an optimal way.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Several of us had an opportunity to engage in a conversation about advanced teaching roles and entry into the teaching profession. And this presentation puts the exclamation mark on the concrete importance of particularly our elementary educators being first up one side and down the other, that teaching in the classroom is so much more than teaching. It is teaching and providing intervention, reteaching, and again assessing where that student is. And so having a floor and a baseline of preparation for those children or for the teacher at that elementary level because so much is expected, that word, you said burden. And it's accurate.
It is.
It's accurate. And that's unfortunate because there's so much joy in seeing the end result, but it is a heavy lift. And how we equip them on the front end is the exclamation point to that conversation that several of us were having earlier.
Any other comments?
I do. I want to ask about resources if I might. So why would the purchase of resources not come from EC dollars? Is that not a pool of dollars for purchasing and making sure the structural resources are available since this kind of grew out of the world of EC?
It's not, oh, go ahead. Here comes the answer.
I'm not asking you a question.
It's not all for EC.
I guess that one's for me, right? So I do want to clarify something. MTSS, yes, has a process where you can move to ultimate eligibility. But it is not, we're going to start MTSS and that student is going to wind up in special ed. And that's something that we have to be careful about how we say. I know that's not what you intended, but we have to be very careful about that. So it is one of the ways. But I'm going to remind you that back in 1975, when the first public law, 94142, was written, it included must show response to an intervention that was basically not successful before you move forward in special ed. The problem was, we didn't define that well as a country, as the federal government didn't require that definition clearly for us until we got to 2004 reauthorization of IDEA. And then it said, you may use this lack of response to an intervention to determine in particular, specific learning disabilities. So that piece of the law, we've always had to do those interventions. The problem was, we didn't have meat to that. So we might put that child at the front of the class and say, we've put an accommodation or we've put a modification in of getting close proximity and that's going to fix the problem with the reading difficulties they're having. It wasn't aligned. So that law realigned those interventions back to the problem of the student. Now, that being said, until they become special ed, it is about, as Angel has said and as her team has said, it's about that core intervention that we can't start looking at special ed till we're, we have been assured that the core instruction is solid and in place. Because otherwise, you get that inverted triangle someone was talking about. And all your kids don't need intervention. Your core has to be beefed up so that you really weed out those kids that really are struggling learners. Does that help?
It does, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, thank you for this report. And, oh, Dr. Emery.
I wanted to add to that very quickly to this point. And I hear what you're saying. I think we also have learned this morning, part of our work is awareness and education at the LEA level. Because part of this separation Cherry just talked about, and even in our own agency, we've had conversations with turnover in keeping IABs as a separate division and not rolling it back under EC, even though a lot of support comes from EC for that division. Because if we don't change the mindset that multi-tiered systems of support is not a vehicle to qualify, the problem-solving model won't work. And I think that rests in how LEAs deliver it and how they communicate expectations. And so I'm not trying to point blame, I'm just saying we have work to do to make sure people understand how to use the model. The other thing I just want us all to remember, there is a great deal of research out there that says the model for districts of high poverty or urban districts has been inverted forever. We've seen it since 2004 when we started looking at the triangle. But we have never intervened our way out of that. So until we apply those rigorous core curriculum to all of our kids, no matter whether they qualify for tier two or tier three interventions, we won't intervene our way out of this performance issue. If you look at some of the research that aligns, it is clear that using those rigorous academic standards with kids that we have already determined are tier two or tier three, not changing it, but keeping them rigorous, they achieve. They will achieve despite all the deficits that they may bring with them. So sorry to have to have two cents worth, but couldn't be quiet about that.
Yeah, I appreciate that input, Dr. Emery. Well, thank you for this report. Clearly, we've made much progress and we have even more work ahead of us to...
Absolutely. We look forward to coming back and sharing some other information.
We look forward to having you back.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you for that. I'll now turn to the superintendent for his report.
Thank you. They're pulling up something exciting that we've been working on for a while. But while we do that, at the beginning of the school year, with the help of the team here at DPI and help of communications, we sent out a call to educators and parents to help run book drives, to collect books for those affected by the multiple storms that have hit North Carolina recently. And we're excited to announce that we have collected thousands of books. Many book drives collected books and gave them to organizations in their area, which is very exciting. But we actually have thousands of books collected at our textbook warehouse. And representatives from districts that were hit by hurricanes are already coming, picking them up. And they're going to be great Christmas presents for students who don't have books at home. So we're very excited about that. And when we started having such success with the book drives, we started brainstorming, what else can we do with the help of parents and educators that hasn't been done before? And we put out the call in early November that if any students or teachers with their classes or even civic organizations wanted to put together holiday cards for service members who are stationed away from home during the holidays, they could send them to us here at DPI and we would make sure that they got to service members. We are thrilled to announce that they kept coming in even after the artificial deadline we tried to set. We are now at over 50,000 holiday cards collected, thanks to the people of North Carolina. Big shout out to Joe and Graham and the communications team because they've really been coordinating this. These holiday cards are going to be going to Iraq, to South Korea, to Japan, a number of other places, notably some aircraft carriers, some coast guard bases. These cards are going from students in North Carolina to service members who are going to be away from home at Christmas and the holidays. And I have to tell you, it sounds wonderful, but you really don't get an idea of how amazing it is until you actually look at some of the cards. So Todd, if you take some and you can pass one down, y'all can pass them down. These cards are absolutely wonderful. And a huge thank you to the educators, the civic groups, the churches, the students who put time and effort into these cards. They are still coming in. We did miss the deadline to get, they're coming in after the deadline to get them to the Pentagon. So we are now working on a special trip to the Raleigh Airport with the USO. And we're going to be giving some very, very special, warm greetings to some service members coming home for the holidays. So we're really excited about it. It's one of those things where, goodness, we talk about so many controversial things in education. But, you know, sometimes when you just do a little innovating and you do some a little different, you can really bring people together and do something pretty amazing. So that's very exciting. The other thing that we wanted to point out to you because it's going live tonight is after a lot of very hard work, I think you first heard about this probably over a year ago, from then-communications director Drew Elliott. And now this has been led by current communications director Graham Wilson. And a huge shout out to Eric Knuckles and the IT team who've been putting this together. The Department of Public Instruction will finally have a brand-new website. We're very excited about this. It goes live tonight. I sent this link to Deanna and she can send it out to y'all so you can go on the test site. Big shout out to all the directors and everyone, the section chiefs, anyone who worked on this. If you, I mean, go to the DPI website right now and try to find something, it's not easy at all. It really isn't. And we're supposed to be a customer service agency. We are supposed to be, you know, our customers are the parents, the students, the teachers of North Carolina. We need to make things easy for them to use and our website was a terrible reflection of that. So what we did in this long process is we worked with our team, we worked with external stakeholders. How can we make it easier for someone looking for an answer or information to find that? And I won't go through the whole website. You can do that. We'll make sure Deanna gets it at the link. And it will be live tonight. But I think what really should strike you is at the top, you can see that they're pretty easy dropdowns for, you know, what is it you're looking for? Are you an educator looking for help with teacher licensing? Click on educators. Are you a student or a parent looking for answers? There's a place to click. So we're very excited about this. This was, of course, with the help of NC Dit. And this is, I think we're the first major agency, I believe. I think maybe commerce, not commerce, maybe, I'm thinking labor. I think labor has also gone to the standard platform. But we are by far the biggest agency to take this on. And it's a really good message, not just for our customer service, to our teachers and students and parents, but also to other agencies that we are showing that, you know, there's some controversy with NC Dit right now, but we're working hand-in-hand with the IT to come up with some really, really good work product that ultimately benefits the citizens of North Carolina. So this is, it's very exciting to see. And I just, I cannot thank the team here at DPI enough for the amount of work that went into this, I mean, over a year. Because so much information, again, was just all over the place in our old website. Finding the best places to put it on this new website took a lot of effort. There was a lot of work that went into this. I'm really, really excited about it. It's a perfect gift for DPI for the holidays. So thank you all.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. I'll now recognize Mr. Duncan for the Business Operations Committee report.
Thank you. On behalf of Todd Chestine and I, we report for the Business Operations Committee. Yesterday, we had a report from Jacqueline Wyatt on the Education and Workforce Innovation Commission's sixth and seventh grade expansion grant recommendations. That's item BizOP 1, which is an action on first reading. You will call, she reported on the grants, how the allocations of the grants were made last year and then for this year, and the intention to proceed with that allocation consistent with the appropriate rubric that was applied. Our action for first reading, BizOP 2, item is North Carolina Public Schools Employee Salary Manual Amendments. Alexis Schaus explained in some detail the status of the legislation for employee salary information for the coming year and its present status. It's necessary to make a number of adjustments to the salary manual. And those adjustments have been made and that's what's before us to approve. It was done with the asterisk or caveat that there may be additional changes and so there may have the need for some additional amendments or revisions to the salary manual depending upon further legislative activity, should there be any in this area. So we, this is a necessary change on a fairly regular basis, but probably a little more complicated, not probably, it is more complicated this particular year. So we appreciate the work of our staff to help make those adjustments. The superintendent seems itching to say something.
Oh, no, sorry. There must be a really good card over there. You can keep that one.
Thank you. I am, because I'm reading to my staff.
Great.
Very good. You'll call what was first named BizOP 3 is something that we have delayed until January. So BizOP, the new BizOP 3, the fresh and new BizOP 3, was our discussion about prioritized budget requests for the coming year. And a number of very good observations were made in terms of things that might be effectively added to that list. Or, thank you. Or alternatively, some very good comments were made about things that should be prioritized on the list. And so we got a very good list. And just by way of background, that comes from the work that's been done throughout the course of the year by the board on our strategic plan, the work that's been done on turnaround schools, of which we had a very fine report on today, work that's been done on framework for reading instruction and student success in the area of reading success, and other work that's been done to assist with respect to our lowest-performing schools, but in other areas of need that we want to provide positive policy direction to assist on. And the prioritization of our budget efforts is focused on those things that the board has had such an emphasis on and a focus on throughout the course of the year. We had our monthly agency vacancy report. We had our update on contracts both executed and planned that were available for review. And finally, BizOP number four is our consent item, which is certification of finance officers, which as you know, we periodically throughout the course of the year have some new local finance officers and we certify those as part of our consent items. So that would be our report. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. And I'll now recognize Ms. White for the Education, Innovation and Charter Schools Committee report.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Amy White and I am the chair of the Education, Innovation and Charter School Committee. And I serve in that capacity with Ms. Jill Camnitz. We have several items that we discussed yesterday. We have an item today, EICS 1, which will be an action on first read. And we had a report yesterday from Dr. Liz Colbert with NCVPS. It's their annual report that they provide to us. She allowed us to, again, see the link that takes us to the online platform that has a number of different dashboard opportunities for data that's presented about that school's particular progress. So that'll be action on first read. Then, secondly, we have EICS 2, which is the presentation from the CSAB for the 2019 accelerated charter school application recommendations. I did want to tell you that there are four schools that have been recommended that they not receive fast-track application and one school that has. Just to remind board members, fast-track application is an accelerated opening process in which instead of following a two-year progress towards opening, it happens in one year. It's a very, very heavy lift for schools to be able to do that. That being said, the measurements required to meet those standards are very tough. We have had an abundance of communication from one of the applications, Old Main Street in Robson County. And at the last meeting, we decided to send that particular application back to the charter school advisory board because it came to us with a four to three vote. We exercised charter school policy CHTR 012 that allows us, when we don't see that we might have consensus or approval, to send an application back to the CSAB for additional dis... discussion and additional review, which they did at their meeting. I want to tell you that in general, I think that the schools, when we have an accelerated application, that we need to see a very strong consensus vote from our CSAB. And we did not have that this time. It's such a big lift that if the CSAB isn't unanimous or closely unanimous about an acceleration, that it raises school concerns that the school is not ready to make that, to make that opening in, within basically about a 10-month period. So the school's vote, Old Main Stream, at first view was barely passing. We sent it back to CSAB, and it came back to us unanimously rejected. I also point out that there were some members absent at the first vote that voted against it when they were present in November. There's been a lot of focus about the curriculum presented by this particular application, and Alex Quigley, who I had the chance to communicate with last night about this particular issue, stated at the end of the CSAB meeting last month, and it is reflected in those minutes, that this application just simply did not meet the threshold and high standards that should be in place when an accelerated application comes before us. And I do believe that upon further discussion, that that is the reason that that school has been moved from last month's approval list to this month's not-approved list. I was asked by a group of supporters for that particular application to talk with our legal team to discuss whether or not any school that is denied application during the application process, if there were a process or a policy or a legal loophole that would allow them to come back before the CSAB to make tweaks to that application. I did consult with our legal team, and the answer to that was no. And quite simply, it would put our Charter School Advisory Board and our Office of Charter Schools in a very difficult place in that any application that this board denies would consistently be going back and saying, well, let us fix this one thing. Let us fix this one thing. And so we did make that check, and the answer is no. What we would say is with today's vote, and the recommendation would be that the recommendations from the Charter School Advisory Board for the four schools that did not receive approval and the one school that did, that we uphold that recommendation. But we would encourage any of those schools that were not approved in this first pass for fast-track, come back again next year with an application and review the recommendations that were made by CSAB to strengthen that application in hopes that they could get approved the next year. With that being said, the next item is EICS 3, and that was a presentation by Ms. Nahad Shah Coltrain on a new cooperative innovative high school in Gaston County. We're so excited about that, so promising. I will beg my friends in the General Assembly to please consider funding all of the cooperative innovative high schools that are, that have not received funding so far. I think this will make number eight. We did, as I mentioned yesterday, have seven items on consent. I discussed those at length, and we will vote on those today if they aren't consented yet. And that concludes my report. Yes, Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I missed the conversation yesterday, so as a point of clarification, specifically with regard to Old Main Stream, what we're suggesting is a denial of the accelerated application, but they would have the ability to go through the typical application timeline, right? Or no?
No, sir. The applicant, I could call Mr. Machado to the podium, but I believe I can answer that the, the application process through, I'll just let Mr. Machado better articulate it than I, but the answer's no.
Thank you. CSAB Charter School Advisory Board had decided before this renewal, I mean, excuse me, this application cycle, that if a charter school or an application was going to ask for an accelerated app, it'd be an accelerated app is the only thing it would be considered for. And if it wasn't considered for an accelerated approval, then it would have to go back and apply again for the next year. And one of the reasons that they made that decision was the year before, we had about 16 schools apply for an accelerated application, and they did have the option, if they didn't get approved for accelerated, they go through the regular one, and we felt, and CSAB felt that it was giving those schools an unfair advantage to get their application heard first. And they wanted to, because the bar for an accelerated application is so high, we wanted to make sure that we kept the integrity of the application that way. So that's why that decision was made by CSAB.
That makes sense. And if I could, thank you for clarifying. I didn't understand that, and so that helps bring some definition. So I'd be remiss if I didn't lift up some of the commentary that has been stated from emails and from advocates. One of the points of contention, I know for a fact, as you mentioned, was the curriculum, the red pedagogy specifically. And from looking at some of the CSAB minutes, I saw that there was a lot of disagreement about, about how American history and how the experience of Native and Indigenous folks was portrayed in the curriculum. And while I do think it's ideal to have, you know, unanimous approval from the CSAB, we should acknowledge that some of the contention, according to the minutes, was not necessarily about, you know, whether it was up to snuff, it was about the portrayal of American history. Coming off of Native American History Month, dealing with a specific subgroup that has been shown to be a high-need population, and as we, as we endeavor as a board to be culturally relevant and responsive, I think that we ought to consider, when looking at these applications, that we need to teach from multiple perspectives. And even if that cuts away from, breaks away from our traditional narratives of American history, it's experienced differently. I know just from coming off of Thanksgiving, that I'm still seeing North Carolina public school teachers and students dressed up as Indigenous folk, right? So as long as we're permitting that, I think we should be willing to present a perspective, a historical portrayal of one that centers the lives and experiences of both Black and Indigenous folk. To me, that's not inherently threatening, except for that it does disrupt some of our, again, our mythologies about American history. So there may not be universal agreement on those things. And so when an application comes and that, and that's kind of one of the core things that there's dissent on, I'm not personally uncomfortable with that. And I would encourage that community, the Indigenous community and other folks who want to teach from a culturally relevant perspective, to not compromise on that. You can still hold high standards of rigor and academic achievement and center the lives and experience of folks of color at the same time. I think there's nothing wrong, in fact, that's inherently American, ideally to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Seeing none, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Ms. White. We'll now take a 15-minute break. Let's be back at 11 o'clock. Hey, thanks for bringing those cards. Those are great.
Oh, yeah. No, it's amazing. Fifty thousand dollars, just like that.
That's one of the world records.
No, I got a laugh.
She's the art.
No.
I know.
She wrote about the application hearing.
I'm, I'm.
I'll disagree.
Goodness, just, just wrong the board.
Yeah, well, I promise.
So similar.
Thank you Chair Davis. I am Olivia Oxendine, the Chair of ESMP and serving with me in that capacity is Ms. Amy White. We have on the agenda today, the first item is an action item and this is going, this is coming to the State Board for our approval today. It is to recommend the Research Triangle Institute Educator Preparation Program and I'm bringing it to the Board for a vote of approval. The, and this certainly isn't an issue, but there was some discussion at our last meeting about the name of the school. So, an operative name for now will be the Research Triangle Institute Educator Preparation Program. So, I, I'm bringing that for our approval today. The second item under ESMP is a revision to SVE policy, LICN 001 to comply with Senate Bill 219 and also Senate Bill 221. Extensive work has been done in that regard. A presentation was made yesterday by Dr. Tomberlin and we also had a presentation at the November meeting. This is, this is for our approval today also. Under the new business item, actually two new business items. One was incorporated in the first one and this was also presented by Dr. Tomberlin and this was in response to Kate Walsh's presentation a couple of months ago where he made us aware of data around the North Carolina teacher pipeline. We will continue to have concerns about the pipeline, making sure and working with our EPPs and doing whatever is necessary by way of policy or resources or whatever the case might be to ensure that our classrooms in North Carolina have high-quality effective classroom teachers in front of our students. Also tied to that new business item was also a report, an update from Dr. Tomberlin on changes in the support provided to our EPPs that are in the process of seeking accreditation. As I pointed out yesterday, national accreditation either from CAPE or AQUEP. And as I pointed out yesterday in my comments, in October and even prior to October, this Board spent a lot of time debating the onboarding or the coming onboard of a second national creditor and that that accreditor is AQUEP. And I think our discussion, or at least Olivia Oxendine assumed at that time, that we would, the level of support that was presently provided to EPPs engaged in accreditation, that that level of support would continue and we have found out since that time that that support has been substantially reduced. We heard from Dr. Tomberlin in his explanation that other demands are causing positions of staffing to be reassigned to different areas of need and necessity. At the same time, we have, our EPP community is looking to this agency to provide the necessary assistance as they pursue the important work of accreditation. In a comment yesterday I made, I don't see any boundaries around quality. When an EPP is seeking engaged in self-study, self-reflection, curricula improvement, program of study improvement, all efforts to improve the preparation of educators, I don't see that unique to national accreditation. I think it covers all gamits, all corners of quality. I, I would be very inclined, even though this was a portion of a new business item, I'm very inclined to, Chair Davis, to put this in the form of a motion. I, it probably goes out of line with parliamentary procedure, but you guide me. I, I think that we need to be very emphatic as a united voice.
They will allow that.
That, so I am, I am moving that the Department restore the necessary support services such that our EPPs receive systematic, systematic assistance as they pursue national accreditation.
We'll include that in our voting motion later in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last item is, is an issue, this is under an issue session and this was presented by Governor Beverly Perdue, Meyer Best, Lynn Moody and Susan Schultz and this is, as we learned yesterday, Governor Perdue is the founder of Digilern and Digilern is, has received a grant, a sizable grant to do work with classroom teachers and school systems in the area of micro credentialing. Micro credentialing holds a lot of promise in personalized, personal, professional development for the classroom teacher. Digilern is very interested in pursuing, forming a partnership with the State Board of Education. We are, we are interested in that partnership and today we formed a small working committee. Actually, we did it during the 15-minute break, an inter, an internal working committee that is going to be meeting with Bev Perdue and her staff to begin laying the groundwork to understand what is entailed in that partnership, how it looks, how it will roll out and that will be the beginning work around the partnership. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine, and I'll just add to, to your comments about the micro credentialing item that demonstrate the Board's commitment to this work. It's actually ongoing. Our DPI staff is doing a lot of work and already has many micro credentialing activities underway with districts that have asked Dr. Tipton Rogers to serve as the Board's representative on that important work and so we know it's in good hands. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, that concludes our committee reports. I do have two items under our Chairman's report and for the first of those, I'll turn to our General Counsel, Mr. Snyder.
Good morning, Board members. Excited to speak with you today about rules. Again, bit of a continuation from our discussion yesterday. You'll be pleased to know I'm going to move through this quickly. I'm excited that as part of the Department's actions in December, it brings in students to do performances and my fifth grade daughter is going to be here at 11:30, so I have a hard stop at 11:30. But we'll be, of course, happy to answer your questions about our ongoing work to adopt permanent rules. Just a quick reminder and level set, you'll recall that a previous iteration of this Board sought clarity in the courts about its duties to meet the Administrative Procedure Act. We got clarity from the courts that indeed this Board does need to follow the Administrative Procedure Act when it seeks to have, have hard and fast rules that it wishes to enforce as law. Recognizing that, that ruling from the Supreme Court could potentially create disruption out in the field for stakeholders, the General Assembly provided a transition mechanism back in the summer of 2018 to allow the State Board to take certain policies in its existing manual and move those appropriate items into the Administrative Code. And then this past summer, General Assembly provided some additional transition time, sort of updated its special process for the Board to follow as, as you all look to advance certain policies as rules. So, looking at Session Law 2019-154, these are sort of the high-end pieces. You'll recall that back in August, you took policies that were existing in your manual and adopted them as emergency rules. If you went online to the Administrative Code today, you would see a number of your policies in there as emergency rules and they have the status as rules. As part of the law, you did not have to adopt temporary rules at the same time. So, that was a unique tweak that the General Assembly added. We're really focusing here on bullet point three where the law directs you to submit a notification for a publication of text to adopt those emergency rules that you advanced in August through the Administrative Procedure Process so that they can become permanent rules. So, what I'm going to ask you to, ask you to do today is to essentially direct the Department to go through the Administrative Procedure Act process of submitting to the Office of Administrative Hearings a notice of publication. Essentially, this is a way that your rules get out there into the public for review and they'll be published in the North Carolina Register on January 2nd. Of course, time is of the essence as we do this. We would like to get these rules, these proposed permanent rules advanced and approved by the Rules Review Commission by May 30th of, of this coming year because those items that you've advanced previously as emergency rules lose that status on May 30th. So, again, you've taken the steps to adopt emergency rules and, and now I'm just going to ask to have the Department, the Board Office make that notice of publication for these emergency rules. Now, I should add importantly, we're talking about essentially 115 new rules that would codify existing policy and these are items that, again, you've already addressed. As you've looked at the materials on Eboard that link the PDF with those 115-plus rules, you'll see that, of course, they look different than your existing policies. So, we've made some changes in order to meet the Administrative Procedure Act requirements with respect to formatting and we've also included some additional clarity with respect to some of the language in these policies. Some of that's just good housekeeping. Some of that comes with feedback from the Rules Review Commission staff who, who provided us some very useful feedback, for example, on some draft charter rules that we sent to them for pre-review. We got back a lot of feedback. They spent considerable time reviewing those existing policies and gave us, in fact, 23 pages of single-spaced feedback. So, again, this is important work. It's difficult work and detail-oriented. But what we've done is taken that feedback, added clarity. A lot of times this is about removing things like passive voice in our policy. In our rules, we want to define who, who's responsible for what. At the end of the day, we're not changing the actual requirements of the rules. Indeed, we're working to preserve the status quo, but the documents are going to look different. And again, these steps are being taken consistent with that legislated mandate to ensure the administration of pre-public schools, that it continues without any interruption. And again, importantly, with respect to implementation, we're not changing the way your existing policies have been implemented. We don't see any new financial impacts from your existing rules because though they may look differently, though we've clarified some of the aspects of some of these rules, they're still going to be implemented in the same way. Now, what are these 115 rules about? They're, they're really about a number of existing policies you have in your book, your policy manual. They're about transportation, licensure, more licensure, more licensure. Teacher education, panoply of other issues here including employee benefits, grad requirements, testing textbooks, safe schools, athletics, accountability, some of your advisory committees. They're about charter schools. They're more about charter schools. Child nutrition, some of your operations, federal programs and our educational services for the deaf and blind. So, again, this is really cross-functional work. You'll see sort of in the, in the chart that's in the executive summary and in the presentation that in a number of instances, you'll see the existing policy number that's been adopted as an emergency rule in that far-right column. You know, just clicking back, you'll see that, for example, we've got a number of rules that we've pulled out of licensure 001. And that's, as you'll recall, as you've seen frequently, we sort of joke that it's LICN 00 always because it seems to be always before the Board. One of the reasons it's been before the Board so much is because it packs in so many rules. So, we've teased out of that large policy, a number of rules and shortened them for brevity and clarity for stakeholders. So, our public is going to have an opportunity, opportunity to be heard consistent with the requirements of the Administrative Procedure Act. We intend to hold hearings here at the Agency for folks to make public comment if they would like to have that recorded, made part of the record. We anticipate those hearings on the 30th of January and on February 13th. We'll also be accepting written comments and addressing those consistent with the requirements of the APA. As a note, of course, we engaged in some of this rulemaking back from the 2018 law and we're going to take those previously submitted public comments and address those and we'll be reaching out to stakeholders who've already made those comments to us. Of course, they are welcome to add any new comments, just as anyone in the public is, but they need not resubmit materials that they've already provided. We're going to scoop those up as part of this process. Though, of course, they're welcome to provide additional comments. So, today I'm going to ask the Board to approve the text of the proposed permanent rules that are in your packet. You should note that with respect to the LICN and TCED, existing policies, emergency rules, those have been vetted and blessed by Pepsi. Appreciate the efforts of those Pepsi Committee, Commission members who met and had a special meeting to get those done. Ask the Board to direct the State Board Office and the Department to submit a notice of publication to adopt those emergency rules as permanent rules. Like I said, there's 115 of these, so if we have any technical corrections that need to be made, like authorization to make those changes, if we need to make some minor wordsmithing or update a fiscal note or things like that as we do our final review before submission. And then just direct the Board Office and the Department to take all necessary steps to advance these through permanent rulemaking during the public comment period. Finally, I think it's just important that, give a shout out to those who've been working very hard on this. I'd like to credit Lou Martin and Melissa Strong in the State Board Office as well as Tiffany Goodson. And Dr. Tomberlin alluded yesterday that his team has been very busy. As you saw on that list of rules, the, Tom's team has been, been very busy, so credit to Kim Evans and Andy Seiberg who've been, you know, up in the legal office on the second floor quite a bit. And I also want to just give some credit to Dave Machado and Ashley Bucaro who's had some very thoughtful reviews of existing charter policies. So, that was my quick report. Any questions, Board members?
Questions from my colleagues.
I have a quick question. Thank you so much. That was a very insightful report and I like the, the frame that has the categories of policies. Can they be sorted by date?
Meaning like is when they were initially passed? We could certainly put together that kind of rule if you like. You should know that the law passed by the General Assembly this past summer required that if the Board was going to bless one of its policies as an emergency rule, that policy had to have been in existence, I believe, on May 29th or May 19th of this year. So, again, we're trying to preserve the status quo. or May 19th of this year. So again, we're trying to preserve the status quo and simply give those policies that have the providence and use of a rule a pathway into the Administrative Code so that it could be treated as such. But we can, we can get that information for you.
Thank you.
You know, the questions, particularly around the ask that our General Counsel has made of us today, that'll be part of our motion to vote on later in the meeting. Questions?
Board members, I might just add one more piece. As we look forward to this first step of moving these policies through into the Administrative Code, know that our friends over at the Rules Review Commission have been, one, very, very helpful. So the codified rules, Molly Masich and her staff, Amber Cronkmay and Ashley Snyder have been very helpful. They always take our calls. They're always quick to lend advice and help us navigate this process. Also want to thank Carrie Hollis over at OSBM, who's in charge of doing kinds of fiscal notes. She's also helped us through this process. And I know these are going to be very important partners for the State Board as it advances rules on behalf of the Agency, on behalf of its own priorities. I will say that one of the important pieces as we look at permanent rulemaking in the future is the Department's capacity to work on fiscal notes. We all know that that's part of the Administrative Procedure Act process, but it is a significant lift, and it's a skill set that we're, we're looking to find people here in the Agency who have, A, the bandwidth to do it, and also that unique capacity. And we're looking to build that, but I think stakeholders here would, folks in the building, business owners, say that's a hard thing to do. So I'll just plant that as a piece, and we've had some internal conversations about, about that capacity.
Well, Mr. Snyder, I want to thank you for, for your work on this and your team's work. This is a heavy lift on top of everything else that, that your team has to perform. But even more, I want to commend you for the manner in which you're approaching this, instead of viewing it as a compliance requirement, which it is. You've embraced it as an opportunity to transform and improve the operation of our Department, the customer service that we offer to those who rely on us in terms of the clarity of our rules and policies. And it very much fits in with the goals of transforming the Agency. And I would encourage us all to adopt that, that mindset, seeing this as an opportunity for improvement and transformation.
We will do our best to remain happy warriors with this process.
I like your optimism. Thank you. And so that's a good segue into, the other item on the, on our report is the Ernst &amp; Young Report and Agency Transformation. And while we don't have a formal presentation today, we look forward to that update in January. I do note that there are some items that in our last report had a target completion date of December 2019, and some were completed and others were not. And just wanted to make sure that those that had not yet been completed at our last report are still on target to meet the December 2019 deadline. So Catherine, I don't know if you can respond to that, or Joe, or who's the appropriate staff member to give us a quick update on those items?
Not a problem. I just wanted to add that we have reconfigured one of our fiscal positions to include fiscal note capacity in the job description, and that's supposed to be posted hopefully next week.
Very good. Thank you.
So we're on sync on that. As far as the EY report, we are not prepared to give an update in January. We are in the process of hiring the first transformation management position for that, and we just got the final reference check and hope to have that position onboard in January. So if you could give us another month on that, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, and we will. And those items that were slated to be completed by this month, some of which already have, but a few that have not, based on our last report, are we still on track to complete those in December?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. All right. We'll look forward to a future update. Any questions on that?
All this discussion about EPP and that educator section of the building, isn't that work guided by the EY report? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then a few final comments. You know, the funding for the Board's priorities and the approved strategic plan sets the direction for what's needed in our state. And we look forward to receiving and approving any final budget requests for the short session at our January meeting. And I want to thank Vice Chairman Duncan for leading us through that process. We also appreciate the General Assembly's efforts in funding some of our priorities and look forward to a continued partnership as we work toward a common vision and goal to benefit the over 1.5 million students in our state. And then a note on our Strategic Planning Committee. That committee remains focused on ensuring the appropriate funding is received to fund our priorities as well as developing implementation strategies. As such, I'm pleased to report that that committee has been successful in securing grant funding on the order of $92,000 to continue our work and begin benefit, and begin unifying the priorities across the state. My thanks to Mr. Ford and Ms. Kamens for your leadership, as well as Dr. Townsend-Smith for securing these funds and moving our strategic plan forward towards implementation. We'll look forward to an update at our January meeting. Ms. Kamens, anything more to add on that?
We're very excited about the opportunity that that affords us to really, really move on this.
I want to say something before we vote.
Sure.
Real quick. I'm very happy this is ahead of schedule. At 11:30, there is a elementary school choir going to be here to spread some holiday cheer. Please go down and watch it. It is one of the best parts of the year. It reminds you why you do what you do.
And we'll note that Mr. Snyder's child will be in, in that presentation.
She's inherited my pipes, so.
We will remember her in our prayers. Board members, we'll now vote on any items requiring action from your committee reports. A thorough discussion report was provided on each item, including any respective consent items, and I'll note for the record Mr. Ford's recusal on EICS 1. Remember that any item on the consent agenda is primarily not complex and may have come to the Board for discussion in a prior month. I note also that Board members have seen these consent agenda items for at least a week. So at this time, I ask if there's a request to remove any item from the consent action or action on first reading agendas. Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the following. The November 5 through 7, 2019, Meeting Minutes, EICS 1 and 2, 4 through 10, and ISD JELOC report, SLA 1 through 3, and 6 through 8, BizOP 1 and 2, and 4, ESMP 1 and 2, and the motion by Dr. Oxendine concerning directing appropriate resources to continue the level of support to our EPPs. And finally, the adoption of State Board of Education emergency rules as permanent rules in compliance with HB 362 Section 27.1 and of SL 2019-154 as presented by Mr. Snyder. Any questions on that motion? I guess I should first get a motion to that effect.
Some of...
Motion by Mr. Keenan. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hall. Thank you. Now, any questions or discussion? Ms. Kamens?
Did that motion include all four of the points that, that Mr. Snyder was asking us to address?
Yes, that's incorporated into the words, adoption of SBE emergency rules as permanent rules. Yes, good call-out. Any other questions about the motion? Seeing none, Dr. Townsend-Smith, we call the roll to capture the vote.
Yes. Mr. Buckston?
Yeah.
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Kamens?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Trustee?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. So my thanks, and the Board's thanks to all staff and presenters for this December 5, 2019 meeting. Board members, this concludes our committee meetings for the day, but we do have some opportunities downstairs, if you to take advantage of. I look forward to seeing each of you in the new year and hope that you have an enjoyable holiday season, celebrating with family and friends. Seeing no other new business items, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Oh, excuse me, before we go to that, Mr. Keenan?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to take this opportunity to say that this is another year coming up, and I wanted to say that I appreciate the leadership from you and Allen and all the Board members and everyone in the staff. I just want to say thank you as a Board member. And as we go into the new, new year, you know, we don't take life for granted. So many intangibles come up in our lives, and we get busy, but always remember that we must continue to love one another, continue to care, and pray for one another, and wish the best for all, because we can agree to disagree, and we do a good job of that on this Board. But I'm proud to be here on this Board. I just wanted to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, and again, remember the spirit of Christmas, to love one another. That's, I appreciate that.
Amen to that. Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Perfect way to adjourn. Motion to adjourn? Mr. Hall, second?
Second.
Second. Dr. Tipton Rogers. Dr. Townsend Smith?
Yes, sir. Mr. Buckston?
Yes.
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Kamens?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Trustee?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?